Notice required for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News and Star Ledger on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, as well as posting on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Armadi, Councilman Davis, Councilman Good, Councilman McCray, Councilman Storch, absent during roll call, Vice President Cockaday?
Present.
Council President Lou Ranssens?
Present.
Six members present in the form of my president.
Please rise to the place of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and the love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of the spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, February 11th, 2019?
Move.
Oh, there's a favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extinctions? Mr. Clerk, are there any communications from the mayor?
Yes, correspondence dated January 24th, 2019, from the Honorable Mayor Adrian Olmapp, addressed to members of the deputy body requesting advice and consent to see Jean Roll as alternate number one to serve as a member of the Plainfield zoning board for justice.
Ceremonial matters. At this time, Councilwoman Ashley Davis will present a resolution to the Plainfield High School wrestling team for capturing its first ever division title.
So if you could have all the members of the wrestling team, as well as their coaches, please come up.
Okay, we're gonna present the following resolution to the high school wrestling team congratulating the Plainfield High School wrestling team for their successful season and capturing their first ever division one title. Whereas, the governing body of the city of Plainfield is proud to recognize the outstanding achievements of the Plainfield High School wrestling team for a successful season. And whereas, the Plainfield High School wrestling team successes include earning Union County Conference Mountain Division Champion, first division title in the history of the Plainfield High School, team runner-up District 13 tournament best finish in the district since 1967, team championship at Rumble in the Pines tournament, first team title at individual tournament since 1967, 19-9 bull meet record tying the school record for the most wins in a season, and highest finish at the Union County Tournament in school history, with eight wrestlers placing five of them as region tournament qualifiers. Whereas, the governing body of the city of Plainfield recognizes the significant positive influence such schools and organizations achieve that help channel the energies and enthusiasm of so many citizens into healthy activities, teaching sportsmanship, and the competitive will to win. Now therefore, be it resolved that the governing body of the city of Plainfield congratulates the Plainfield High School wrestling team, the staff, and family members who have all undoubtedly helped to contribute to their success, and be it further resolved that the government body is hereby spread upon its permanent records evidence of the multiple achievements of the Plainfield High School wrestling team, and does further send sincere congratulations. How can I present the resolution to the coach? And if you all want individual resolutions, just let us know in the city clerk's room here.
Okay, because we're now going to honor quite a few women who have been phenomenal at Women's History Month, I'm just going to do one resolution, but I'm going to call the names, and unfortunately, all the women are not here yet, but we will get their resolutions to them. I will call the names first, and then I will read Mrs. Porterfields, because she was the first woman in the seat, and the others will read the same. We are giving resolutions this evening to Assemblywoman Linda S. Carter, preholder Rebecca L. Williams, Mrs. Julia V. Porterfield, Ms. Rhonda McPherson, Mrs. Patricia A. Fields Winfrey, and Mrs. Nancy Piroir, Mrs. Donna Albanese, Dr. Bindu Shadiva, and Dr. Anita Kishin. And the resolution reads as, "In recognition of Women's History Month and the countless contributions of Julia V. Porterfield introduced by unanimous municipal council. Whereas, in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, the Plainfield City Council finds it appropriate to recognize and honor Julia V. Porterfield and the other women who through their, her, through her daily work continues to create a legacy that will inspire generations of women to come. And whereas, for over thirty years, Julia V. Porterfield, together with her husband Rashad, have owned and operated the successful transportation company, Amica Porterfield, making her one of the only..." Making her one of the only female in African-American-owned transportation companies in the United States. Whereas, with the passion to uplift her community, Julia V. Porterfield has counseled, trained, and employed a number of Plainfield residents, many of whom were deemed unemployable. She also hosts an annual Plainfield carnival that attracts tens of thousands of community residents each year. And whereas, Julia V. Porterfield continues to operate in a very competitive male-dominated industry. As an African-American female, she has been able to overcome gender and racial barriers and sustain her business for over thirty years. She is able to network with the infrastructure of the communities in which she does business to ensure consistent communication and promote collective work and relationships. And whereas, within all the spheres of her life and work, Julia V. Porterfield has fought for equality and against the status quo, and has broken the bonds of discrimination, partiality, and injustice for the benefit of all. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of Women's History Month, a month dedicated to honoring the countless women who sacrificed and strive to ensure all people have an equal shot at pursuing the American dream, the Plainfield City Council, County of Union, State of New Jersey, thus hereby honor Julia V. Porterfield for the powerful legacy she has created and meaningful example she has set. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution suitably prepared be presented to Julia V. Porterfield at the March 11th, 2019, regular meeting of the Plainfield City Council in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, as we continue to celebrate the countless women whose courage and resolve have contributed to the character and success of our city. Signed by the council. Okay, I just thought, I cannot let the other two women's resolutions not be read, so I'm gonna get my great speaker here, Elder, to do one, and then we're gonna break the law here. Yes, yeah, and we'll call when they come up.
The countless contributions of Patricia A. Fields. Whereas, in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, the Plainfield City Council finds it appropriate to recognize and honor Patricia A. Fields, who through her daily work continues to create a legacy that will inspire generations of women to come. And whereas, Patricia A. Fields is the president and CEO of Meeting of the Minds, which has for over forty years provided expert planning, negotiating, and resource consulting services for the coordination of small and large events, national and internationally. And whereas, for many years, Patricia A. Fields has been an avid volunteer promoting events and activities that positively impact Plainfield and other communities. She has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to produce more than fifty free concerts that are open to the public. Her compassion for the less fortunate and those in need can be seen in her work and partnerships to which she has hosted, including spearheading the faith, hope, and charity Katrina Relief Project, coordinating the annual backpack and school supply projects, and food drives, creating two historical House of Worship tours, in her leadership roles in Relay, and in many other notable community events and activities. Whereas, Patricia A. Fields has been a recipient of numerous prestigious awards that include personal recognition from President George W. Bush, who presented her the USA Freedom Corp Award, also New Jersey Governor Martin Luther. Drum major for community service, being named 100, the 100 Most Influential People in New Jersey, and was being featured in George Fraser's book, Success Runs in Our Race. And whereas, within all the spheres of her life and work, Patricia A. Fields has fought for equality and against the status quo, and has broken the bonds of discrimination, partiality, and injustice for the benefit of all. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of Women's History Month, a month dedicated to honoring the countless women who've sacrificed and strive to ensure all people have an equal shot at pursuing the American dream, the Plainfield City Council, County of Union, State of New Jersey, thus hereby honor Patricia A. Fields for the powerful legacy she has created and the meaningful example she has set. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution suitably prepared will be presented to Patricia A. Fields at the March 11th, 2019, regular meeting of this Plainfield City Council in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, as we continue to celebrate the countless women whose courage and resolve have contributed to the character and success of our city, adopted unanimously by the Plainfield City Council.
Okay, I don't have the radio voice of Councilman Barry White, I mean Barry Good. The countless contributions of Nancy Piroir, introduced by the unanimous municipal council. Whereas, in recognition of the Women's History Month 2019, the Plainfield City Council finds it appropriate to recognize and honor Nancy Piroir, who through her daily work continues to create a legacy that will inspire generations of women to come. And whereas, Nancy Piroir is a lifelong outspoken, involved, and passionate resident of the city of Plainfield. Whereas, Nancy Piroir has served as a member of Plainfield Committee for the Sosura South Subban Centennial, a member of the Plainfield Cultural and Heritage Commission, a member of the Union County Cultural and Heritage Advisory Board, president of the Historical Society of Plainfield, a member of the St. Mary Historical Committee, a representative of the Green Brook Flood Control Force, a representative to the New Jersey Transit Art Board for the Public Art Project for the Plainfield Train Station Construction Project, a member of the Plainfield's Veteran Memorial Committee, and a member of the Nulenberg Research Group. And whereas, within all spheres of her life and work, Nancy Piroir has fought for equality and against the status quo, and has broken the bonds of discrimination, partiality, and injustice for all, for the benefit of all. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of Women's History Month, a month dedicated to honoring the countless women who sacrificed and strive to ensure all people have an equal shot at pursuing the American dream, the Plainfield City Council, County of Union, State of New Jersey, thus hereby honor Nancy Piroir for the powerful legacy that she has created and the meaningful example she has set. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution suitably prepared be presented to Nancy at the March 11th, 2019, regular meeting of the Plainfield City Council in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, as we continue to celebrate the countless women whose courage and resolve have contributed to the character and success of our city, unanimously adopted by the city council on this day. Thank you, Nancy.
Actually, in support of these women, I'd like all the council to come down. Okay, Kishner, the city clerk, will read yours, and Dr. Lindu, the deputy city clerk will read yours.
This is a council matic resolution in recognition of Women's History Month and the countless contributions of Dr. Anita Kishin, introduced by the unanimous municipal council. Whereas, in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, the Plainfield City Council finds it appropriate to recognize and honor Dr. Anita Kishin, who through her daily work continues to create a legacy that will inspire generations of women to come. Whereas, Dr. Anita Kishin is a founder and owner of Kits Care Pediatric, which she's proudly nurtured since 2009, with over twenty years of experience as a physician. She has established herself in the Plainfield community, providing quality health care to children with a deep rooted commitment to community consciousness. Whereas, Dr. Anita Kishin's clinical interests include childhood obesity, psychosocial issues, and developmental surveillance. She consistently provides top-quality, team-based, comprehensive care at the only certified Level Three Pediatric Patient Centered Medical Home in Plainfield. She supports the local community through outreach and community improvement committees, including the Immigration and Health Committee of New Jersey, of the American Academy of Pediatrics. And whereas, within all the spheres of her life and work, Dr. Anita Kishin has fought for equality and against the status quo, and has broken the bonds of discrimination and injustice for the benefit of all. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of Women's History Month, a month dedicated to honoring the countless women who've sacrificed and strive to ensure all, all people have an equal shot at pursuing the American dream, Plainfield City Council, County of Union, State of New Jersey, thus hereby honor Dr. Anita Kishin for the powerful legacy she has created and the meaningful example she has set. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution suitably prepared be presented to Dr. Anita Kishin at the March 11th, 2019, regular meeting of the Plainfield City Council in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, as we continue to celebrate the countless women whose courage and resolve have contributed to the character and success of our city. This is in recognition of the countless contributions of Bindu Shadiva. Whereas, in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, the Plainfield City Council finds it appropriate to recognize and honor Bindu Shadiva, who through her daily work continues to create a legacy that will inspire generations of women to come. Whereas, Bindu Shadiva had the opportunity to further her education at the prestigious and highly regarded New York University College of Dentistry with honors in general practice. After finishing dental school, she did two years of residency in the Jacoby Medical Center in the Bronx, New Jersey, where she served as chief resident. And whereas, Bindu Shadiva practiced dentistry in India, having graduated from dental school in 1996 at the Marshall University. And whereas, Bindu Shadiva, after many years of practicing dentistry, visited the great city of Plainfield, New Jersey, and was amazed by the diversity and richness of different cultures. In 2016, she decided to move her practice to the city of Plainfield, where she can help the community one smile at a time. And whereas, within all the spheres of her life and work, Bindu Shadiva has fought for equality and against the status quo, and has broken the bonds of discrimination, partiality, and injustice for the benefit of all. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of Women's History Month, a month dedicated to honoring the countless women who've sacrificed and strive to ensure all people have an equal shot at pursuing the American dream, the Plainfield City Council, County of Union, State of New Jersey, thus hereby honor Bindu Shadiva for the powerful legacy she has created and the meaningful example she has set. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution suitably prepared be presented to Bindu Shadiva at the March 11th, 2019, regular meeting of the Plainfield City Council in recognition of Women's History Month 2019, as we continue to celebrate the countless women whose courage and resolve have contributed to the character and success of our city.
Thank you. Thank you. The businessman on the motion to suspend the regular order business to have the mayor All those in favor? Opposed?
Well, thank you, Council President. I want to take this opportunity to speak to you briefly about the ordinance that you will consider this evening, that seeks to place the responsibility for the oath in the hands of the administration. I believe that legislation should be crafted not based on who is in office, or who may be in office at some different time. It should be based on what is allowed by the larger document that governs our city. And in this case, that larger document is the charter. And I firmly believe that the charter places all responsibilities for hiring and termination with the executive branch, with the exception of cabinet-level positions where advice and consent is required. However, I also believe that it is important for me to continue to have a decent and healthy working relationship with you, the members of the governing body, one that is not adversarial, but built on trust and in a spirit of corporation, as called equal branches of government. I also know that I don't want always to be right. I want to be successful. I will direct Director Riley to go back to the drawing board and look very carefully for opportunities for cost containment within his department with a focus on our 911 dispatch function, in an effort to reduce rising overtime costs, often resulting from employees calling out, thereby necessitating calling in uniform officers to work on overtime. I would be expecting a report from Director Riley with recommendations for dealing with the 911 dispatch situation. Having said all of the above, and having heard from council members and other stakeholders, the administration is withdrawing NC 2019. Furthermore, I urge the council not to walk on any resolutions this evening. To our unions who have raised their voices, I am not offended. You should always do what you think is in your best interest. That is what you need to do. In the back comes the president and members of the governing body, and you who are applauding me so loudly, I say thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Matt. May I have a motion to go out of order and withdraw NC 2019-07?
It's a move, and properly second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay.
So just for the record, MC 2019-07 has been withdrawn from the agenda.
And Council President, I just want to go on record...
Yeah, just want to go on record saying to the mayor that I think this is a good move, but had this stayed on the agenda for the record, I would have voted against it, maybe for some of the same reasons, but for the additional reason as well stated in a letter I got from one of our unions, which is... which is that we should not remove checks and balances from the layoff process, that a decision as serious as a layoff should be required to be considered by both the mayor and the council. Thank you.
I would like to probably concur with my colleague, Councilman George. Thank you.
Okay.
Sure, I'd just like to add that many times when individuals may state that they don't think that the council or the administration is listening when they come up and speak. And this is just one instance, that I'm sure of many, that you'll see that this governing body is one that represents the community and wants to be reflective of the community. And when you speak out and you have concerns, we are going to take those seriously and hopefully make the best decision for the community. So, thank you.
Since we're on the statements tonight, I do want, I do want to concur with what my council colleague says, and this is a testament to what happens when you use your voice and you speak out and you let your elected officials know what you will or will not tolerate. So I'm just happy to know that the administration did withdraw this ordinance from the agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you, all council people. Consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage? Oh, I can have a motion to go back and say, thank you, past president. Can I have a motion to go back and say, second? Okay. All right, so move and properly second. All in favor? All opposed? Ascendents? All right, consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage? MC 2019-05. But please read MC 2019-05 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019-05 is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 48-4514. CFI certified that the notice of public care notice ordinance was published in Courier-News on February 15, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Seeing no one come to the mic, may I have a motion to close public hearing of the ordinance?
So moved, Madam President, seconded.
Okay. But may I have a roll call?
Roll call on MC 2019-05, council members Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President goes ransomed.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on the second reading and final passage.
A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open.
Good evening, Cynthia Smith, President of the PBA. I know you guys pulled it, but we did bring the attorney here tonight, so I want to ask a question.
Council President Speaker is out of order.
I would like the council to please consider, let me ask a question, so I can have the attorney go home that we paid to come in tonight.
I've got to follow the advice of our councillor, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, someone could just clarify, does that mean that if it's withdrawn, can it be brought back at any time?
There's no way it's going to go on the council.
Timothy Priano-Martin Avenue, this is general to the board.
Any resolutions?
Yes, about the resolution. I'm proud to say this is March month of women, and it showed that a young woman started something, and we have a woman running our council now. It's the strength of women, that's all I'm saying. The women that you honored today is all for that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kia Morel, I live at St. Sofa, East Front Street, apartment 9, Plainfield, New Jersey. And I have spoken every week since this started. Today I say thank you. Thank you for letting us know that because we were strong and we were able to voice our piece and we had.
Council President Speaker is out of order.
Thank you.
We're not trying to, it's out of order because, let me explain it to the public, because this is the section where it's about what's on the agenda, the resolutions that are following the ordinance. So, excuse me, I can handle this, okay, I'm good, I'm good. If you want to wait until the end, we do have an open public meetings. I mean, a part where you can speak on anything you would like to speak on, okay? Seeing no one else comes to the mic about the resolutions that are printed, I would ask for a motion to close public comments.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Consent agenda.
Yes, Madam President, the consent agenda items identified as resolutions are R103-19 through R107-19, R113-19 through R119-19, R123-19, R127-19 through R132-19.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call, consent agenda items, council members Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President goes ransomed?
Yes.
Consent agenda items have been approved.
Clerk, will you please read the remaining resolutions?
Resolution R108-19 is authorizing a settlement in the matter of Michael Bo versus the city of Plainfield.
May I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
Opposed? Any statement?
Resolution R109-19 authorizing a professional services agreement with Wimminghorn and Esmerado, PC to Wimming and Roth LLC.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any statement?
Resolution R110-19 authorizing a contract award to the Aubrey Group.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any statement?
Resolution R111-19 authorizing a contract award with Millennium Strategies.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any statement?
Resolution R112-19 authorizing the adoption of current fund temporary and emergency appropriations.
May I have a motion to approve?
Seconded.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any statement?
Resolution R120-19 authorizing the award of a professional services contract to Remington and Burke Energy Engineers.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Resolution R121-19 authorizing the award of contract asphalt paving assistance program.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any statement?
Resolution R122-19 authorizes the award of a contract for Phase 1 environmental site assessment for the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Resolution R124 amending Resolution R82-19.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Resolution R125-19 authorizing the conditional designation of the South Tower Urban Renewal LLC.
May I have a motion to approve?
Moved, Madam President. Second.
Any opposed? Opposed? Any other questions, question from the story, I'm sorry. You opposed?
Yes.
Oh, okay, any abstaining?
Resolution R126 authorizing the planning board to add one additional property to the transit-oriented development downtown South.
May I have a motion to approve?
Approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
Resolution R133-19 awarding a contract to Comcast.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded. Question?
Question, Councilman Good?
Yes. Mrs. Quay, can I ask you my last question? I'd like to know, is there a way that you can track the impact of the ads that are being shown on television and editing? If you do know, this staff can tell us as well as the public.
Thank you, Councilman. We're not able to track the TV ads, but we do have digital ads. People watch a lot of TV on their computers. And so we're able to track the impact that those video ads have had in 2018. The video ads are delivered 699,971 times with premium online content. And our target audience has spent over 5,246 hours interacting with the videos. It was 6.23% of the video ad impressions were viewed in, those are the stats that we have from those who view the ads online, through their computer devices. It's certainly more difficult to track it through the people who viewed on their television sets at home. But we have had a lot of people calling in who have cited that they've seen the ads based on what demographic we were targeting.
I'm sorry, I know I heard airtime, how much airtime?
Pardon me?
How much, this is a purchase of airtime, just about how much airtime are we getting?
Well, if you look, there were some attachments that were in the packet that was sent with the consent agenda. It details.
Must have been oversight, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So we had, last year we had three ads in rotation. And that each one targeted a different demographic. So we sat with the Comcast representative and explained what we were trying to achieve. And based on their expertise, they recommended the markets that we should have made the ads in.
And, yeah, it's similar with that, the whole series in it, okay?
Yes, so I have two questions. One, you talked about the target demographics, if you can just let us know what that is. And my second question is, just for the benefit of the public, if we can just explain what UEC funds can and cannot be used for? Because I know at the agenda fixing session, there were some complaints, like, well, the city has this money. But if we can just explain to the public what UEC funds can and cannot be used for?
So, we had three ads in rotation. I'll address the first question.
Council President, may I, I'm sorry, that, the record, let me respond that. So that's a very good question. So the UEC funded can be used for anything that impacts the UEC designation area. So in this case, it's our downtown, anything that has to do with UEC. So UEC funded by the state regulation allows us to do any infrastructure improvements, marketing, publicity, anything that is going to draw and highlight the town towns for the purposes of attracting more foot traffic to the businesses. So that's basically why we are able to use the UEC funding. As far as targeted areas, and in the packet that was provided to the council members, you specifically broke down the different channels where the TV ad will be running. And also we selectively, purposely selected certain programs and certain sports activities. As far as this, everybody knows this is Mark Magnus. You know, a lot of people are watching basketball, college basketball. And we purposely will be running ads in between those games and the commercials, you know, because we have the most, you know, people watching. As far as targeted areas, as we stated since 2014, and we continue to do the same type of marketing, our target has always been to rebrand the city of Plainfield. But as you heard from an economic development perspective, we are building a lot of residential units. And we purposely do an advertisement in places outside the city of Plainfield and outside Union County. So you will see a lot of this advertisement being played in New York, Brooklyn, Connecticut, Los Angeles to be able to attract, you know, residents from that area.
So, so I think my question was more of, who are we looking to target? So based off your answer, we're just trying to get a wide viewership. Is there like a specific, like, well, we want men 35 to 50, or we want millennials of any gender, 18 to 34, like, how do we?
Right, thank you. What I was going to say is that we had three ads in rotation. One target speaks to the restaurants, the offering of restaurants that we have in town. That was a target audience, there was anyone who lived within proximity of the city or who could take public transportation to live here in order to patronize the restaurants that we have in town. We had another ad running which spoke of historic Plainfield, which was targeted at drawing people to come and live here, reside here. So with the advice of the Comcast representative, we identified target areas that we thought would have that demographic of people who would be potential residents here. And we stated in the packet, you can see the grid, and I don't remember them all off the top of my head. The third ad we had in rotation was to target developers and people who would want to invest in things. And again, with the advice of the Comcast representative, we identified those areas that we thought that we could reach potential investors and developers.
And, Council President, I just want to add to that. It's important for everyone to recognize that for over three decades, nothing in terms of development and redevelopment is happening in our city. And we invested dollars in commercials across the tri-state area to attract people into our city, attract investment dollars, attract developers. And in light of the fact that we have over a half a billion dollars in projects either in construction or in the pipeline, is a demonstration of how successful this ad campaign has been. And we have, every dollar that we've spent, we have more than seen that in return by way of the amount of economic development activity that is across all wards of our city.
And, how do you agree with you? Thank you. Okay. I have a motion to approve that I can tell you, because it's been a long time. May I have a motion to approve? Okay, it's a move and second, it was so long ago. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Okay, introduction of ordinances on first reading. We come to ordinances on first reading. Uh, clerk, would you please read ordinance MC twenty nineteen dash zero six?
MC twenty nineteen zero six is an ordinance adopting the amended received redevelopment plan for the East Third Street and Richmond Street redevelopment area.
Any other questions from the council? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So be it.
If there are seconds?
Seconded.
Hey clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Armani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransum?
Yes.
That unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC twenty nineteen dash zero eight?
MC twenty nineteen zero eight is an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article fourteen, Chapter eleven of the municipal city license.
Any other questions from the council? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So be it. Seconded.
May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransum?
Yes.
That unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading, and these two ordinances that were adopted, uh, will, public hearing will take place at the next regular meeting on Monday, April eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes. The floor is now open.
Johnny Pritchard, formerly of seven two three Arlington Avenue, Plainfield, now forty-two dash four West Tully Street, Cavendish. A couple of things I'd like to address the city, members of the city council. We need to back our men and women in uniform, especially those in our armed forces, Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and Air Force. We failed to do that during the war in Vietnam. Sixteen of Plainfielders lost their lives fighting for us in that war-torn land. Sixteen men died fighting for us. Those who survived came back. They were called Nazis, Burgers, Badians. I'd like to see that word Nazi retired once and for all. That word Nazi is just as bad as another word which of course I will not, I believe, will not use. The poor brave soldiers are in despise. They're accounted as a stranger. Remember, he was his country's stay in day and hour danger. And the other thing is, we need to reactivate Milenburg. We need to reactivate that hospital soon. Because it's a national security issue. What if, when the war attack occurs? We need that hospital very badly. And also, we can attract more people to Plainfield if we reactivate Milenburg as soon as possible. The sooner we reactivate Milenburg, the better, or we already be. Do you understand clear?
Good evening, Kelly Newsom, Watchon, New Jersey. It's Mr. Mayor, the council, the director. Um, I brought my clan here today, they wanted to know where I've been for the last couple of Mondays. So I brought them here with me, but I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to the council, that's all I want to say. Thank you for what you did tonight. Thank you.
Okay, again, Cynthia Smith. Um, first let me apologize, I was not trying to be rude right here. It's just that we had someone here that was charging us, you know, about an hour and a clock. So, if, if there was opportunity that he needed to say something, I wanted to, you know, let him do it so that he could leave for the day. But, um, I would just like to say thank you to the mayor and to the council for withdrawing us tonight. Um, you know, my question was, does this mean that you guys could bring this back? Or do we have to worry about you bringing it back? Hopefully not. And, um, again, I just want to say thank you to everyone. And as the mayor said, no hard feelings about anything. Okay, thank you.
Nancy P. Oliver, twenty-nine, we're eleven. First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank the council for the honor that they gave me. Um, I still on the backs of my parents, who settled in this town and, um, raised us to give back to the community. My brother served in the United States Navy, served under, uh, at the Pentagon under, um, Casper Weinberger. Uh, my sister, um, was a councilwoman in Ohio. Uh, my younger brother went to serve for many years over at Middlesex County Utility Authority. My father served as Commissioner for Pasa. He also served on the Middlesex County Utility Authority. My mother, uh, integrated the Girl Scout troop at Jefferson School. And, uh, my nephew went on to serve, uh, uh, as, uh, Temporary Chair of the Security Exchange Commission in Washington, DC. And my niece works in Maryland for social services. And I work for the postal service in Waukegan, the entire city of Plainfield plus, uh, North Plainfield, and drove Watchon and Warren for thirty-eight years, and I appreciate it. But I'm up here tonight to let you know that I appreciate what you did about the, uh, grant for the firehouse. History matters to our kids. Um, I learned that lesson. You were the, uh, one of the first honors I got this week. But my other honor I got was I gave a talk about, um, Black history of Plainfield, including location of two sites in Plainfield that are in the Green Book that need to be designated. One is no longer there, but one house is still there. Um, and it needs a sign to say that Ms. Robinson offered her house and it was listed in the Green Book. But a, a young child whose grandparents live in Plainfield came to that. He's a second grader, he wrote a book about the talk. And I just wanted to read to you what he wrote this book. Plainfield is a beautiful city, there is a lot that we can learn about Black history that took place in Plainfield, New Jersey. I attended a Black history program at the Drake House Museum where my great-great-grandfather helped to keep it clean. He was a public works worker. Uh, I learned a lot and was inspired to share my experience with you. Uh, his, he wrote a book, he said he took five minutes to do it, okay? Um, we have at the Drake House, if anybody's interested. He now lives in Elizabeth, but he's a second grader at the Ronald Reagan Charter School there. And it's pretty impressive that a young child took what I talked about and also took what the library talked about and wrote a book. Thank you very much.
Um, very quickly, and thank you very much for this time, I just want to thank.
Name and address.
The city council.
Name and address.
I'm sorry, Patricia Fields. Hmm, can I go postal? One eighty-nine, Hundred Terrace, Plainfield, New Jersey, at the moment. And, um, very grateful for the honor that you bestowed upon me today. Um, I was born in Plainfield in nineteen forty-five, and I love this city. I have been watching it since I was a child, when it was a booming, wonderful, really the clean city. I saw it kind of fade away for a moment, but I am looking at the difference in Plainfield today. And I think it's a good change. And I really love the way this administration appears to be working for the community. And I can base it on what I saw here tonight. Uh, I am only recently back in the Plainfield area, and so while I was in another town, I was keeping tabs on what was going on here. And I was still doing all of my volunteer services here, which I will continue to do. So thank you for giving me flowers while I'm here and blessing me in such a special way. You all are very special, I know your hearts are with Plainfield, and I thank you.
Good evening, Willa Campbell, fourteen oh four Highland Avenue, Plainfield. I'd like to commend the council for listening to the hearts and minds of the people. I think when the council listens and people talk from their heart and you hear that, that's a sign of good government. Since we're in such a benevolent mood tonight, I'd like to also, uh, just dial it back to something that was done, I think a couple of months, maybe a few months ago, regarding the, um, changeover from a director of the fire department and taking away the chief position. I think it's important to look at history, as was indicated by Ms. Peawar. And if we go back to the history of how a director position was decided for the fire department, it was through a consent decree by the federal government. And the purpose of that was to give Black firefighters something to aspire to become. With the change from a director, from a chief, our firemen have nothing to aspire to become because there is no chief. The director, I believe now, is, um, a layperson. And he may have had a previous career in firefighting, but he's not someone who came up through the ranks of the fire department. And I think that's something to take a very serious look at. Because you have young firefighters, some who may develop a career of thirty years or more, they can never become the chief. Because this body decided to change that. And I think that's something that we need to look at. I also, as, um, a Realtor, want to bring to your attention a concern that I had and other Realtors have had about how we're able to obtain a smoke detector inspection. Um, since this body often talks about what other towns do, how other towns do things. Uh, an efficient way that other towns do the smoke detector inspection is they give people an opportunity to acquire one in eleven days for like forty dollars. And Plainfield has a different scheduling, it's a little bit more expensive. Something I think that you need to take a look at. One town in particular is Elizabeth. Their process is very simplistic and cost-effective for the homeowner. And I think that's something that you need to take a look at. And also, I was listening to what the mayor was talking about in terms of economic development. And when I look at economic development for a city, I think more in terms of commercial business coming in, not just residents. Because all of those residents coming in need some things to do, services are necessary. So I'd like to hear, you know, a plan that is in place for economic development to go after commercial entities. And not swapping out, you know, the one restaurant, decent restaurant, Giovanni's that we have in town for a Wawa. And pushing out Seven Eleven for a Wawa. Wawa is fine, but what else can we bring? That's a quality to our town. To attract those residents, you're going after Brooklyn and the Bronx and all of that, they have all of that. What will attract them to come to Plainfield? If we can only offer them Dollar Stores, Wawa? They're all good, but we need something a little more high-end. And I don't want to go there about how many more schools we have to build. Because absolutely, all these people who are being attracted to the city, there will be more students that will need places in schools. And with what's going on with the Student Development Authority, I'm a little concerned about the future of new schools coming here. Thank you.
Richard Wyatt, twelve hundred, Mergill Avenue. Madam President, I would like to, uh, thank you, uh, thank the council for finally not robbery, to acknowledge and honor our young scholar athletes and their coaches and their accomplishments today. Um, one, that's important because they need to know that their hard work and dedication doesn't go unnoticed. Secondly, they need to know that the whole entire city is behind them, not only in sports, but all of their future endeavors. Uh, secondly, I would like to thank you as a city employee and thank the mayor for the decision tonight. And I know that this is rough, uh, having gone through this a couple of months ago. I don't know what it is about the city of Plainfield, or the year two thousand nineteen is the year of ticking off our unions. Uh, but I didn't come here to, uh, be the coffee calling the cat of black. I just wanted to thank you for the, the hard work that you do, and I know that it's rough in those seats. So thank you for your decision tonight, and thank you for allowing, uh, Cynthia Angela Davis, State and Smith back here for organizing and galvanizing the people, um, thank you, because now I could have had my mother back from it, she doesn't have to fight anymore.
Seeing no one else approaching the mic, I'd like to have a motion to close the session.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
I'm tired.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you went spit. Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, if you would adjourn, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the, the women that the council honored this evening. They're all very deserving of the honor that you bestowed upon them because of their hard work and dedication, all of what they've done over the years to make life in this city, in this state, and in this nation better. And so to all of the honorees, I commend you and I thank the council for bestowing the honor upon all of you.
I'll make a comment.
Is your in?
Um, I just wanted to say that I do take offense to referring to our fire director as a layperson. Uh, I, I know I speak for myself and my other colleagues when I say that there was a national search, and he was, um, you know, a very qualified applicant who had years of experience as well as the management experience. And we know we have full confidence that he will continue to serve as well. So I do thank Mr. Mendel, and as I recall, um, it was unanimous, his appointment. So I just want to say that for the record.
Any other council members? All right, hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Both.
All in favor?